I want to welcome everyone to the October 1st meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has the prayer and the pledge.
If you would bow with me. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for our many blessings. We've got a great city and we're so proud of it, and we know it's because of your blessings. Thank you for keeping your healing hands over those who are struggling with their health right now. We know that we have some amongst us who we really want to remember in our prayers tonight. Be with our firefighters, be with our police department, be with all the city employees as they go about their daily jobs, and be with us as we go through this meeting tonight, that we might do things that would be in the way that you would like for them to be done. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to move into our consent agenda. We have several different items on the consent agenda tonight.
I'll move for passage.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Aye.
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 Move into a department update. So, we're going to hear from the St. Clair Senior Citizen, Senior Center, Ms. Connie Rigsby, the director. Ms. Rigsby, good to see you.
Evening, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come out this evening on a very rainy night to introduce some of the programs and the forward future of St. Clair Street Senior Center. I can't go without starting by kind of thanking and looking back in the crowd. I have several of our staff at St. Clair here, and also several of our commission members here this evening. Our commission chair, Jim Getzinger, and several other members of the committee, so I really do appreciate them coming and support of the senior center. We've worked really hard the last year and a half since I've started this position to look toward the future of St. Clair Street Senior Center. So, I've delivered a packet with you, but I also have a special guest that I've invited that may help in any areas. We have the Deputy Director of the Tennessee Commission on Aging, Ms. Kathy Zamata, has joined us. In fact, this last couple of weeks, we've had the Tennessee Commission on Aging Executive Director Jim Shulman actually came in last week to film our second episode of our Life After 60 program that will be running the next three months, talking about the future of senior centers and the challenges that centers and aging faces in the future. So, in your packet, I really tried to make this where that some of the terms maybe that I use, or some of the things that we're looking at have changed over the last few years. Prior to me coming on as the director, the state had went through a large study of going through a lot of their chapters, other programs that they represent, all of the programs in aging. And one of those chapters, Chapter 6, is senior centers. And I think Kathy Zamata got the lucky draw on being able to get together with not only area agencies across the state, but also some senior centers across the state to look at that plan. I was fortunate to be one of those that worked with the state, kind of looking at what was in the request of senior centers. It was an awful lot. Some of the things were, had been there for a very long time and needed another fresh eye on it, so it was very fortunate for myself to have that opportunity. And so, when I came to St. Clair and all of the procedures had gone into place, I was kind of really ready to kind of hit the ground running. The only thing that we kind of faced is that a lot of our staff and our commission had not kind of gotten up to speed with Chapter 6 and some of the changes that came down, which for a lot of folks didn't see a lot of change to seniors, but it did to staff. And so, you're looking at what we call the five different categories of senior center services that the state kind of recognizes as the cornerstone, the things that we should be doing for the folks that are in our communities aging, and what senior centers can do to promote those. One is also resource information, health promotion, physical fitness and exercise, education, telephone reassurance, and recreation. And so, those programs that you, that we present, all have definitions that the state, federal government, all kind of agree to. And so, as a senior center director, it's my challenge to work with our staff to make sure that we're presenting programs in that area. Now, I will tell you, my very first day at St. Clair Street Senior Center, I met with a large assembly of the seniors and staff, and I told them, "There are going to be days that I don't make you happy." There were a lot of things that needed to change, a lot of things that needed to kind of look at with a different eye based on what Chapter 6 was asking of us, and based on what we were doing to be ready for the next generation of seniors. And so, with that, we have gathered our commission and full understanding of what this looks like. We've gathered our staff and full direction of what this looks like, and we've kind of, this last year and a half, kind of implemented those programs. So, what you're going to look at on the next couple of pages is, one, is evidence-based programming. It's a very important tool that the state and the federal government is asking of senior centers, and so, we've been very lucky that the last year and a half, we have at least three, one, two, three, four programs that we are presenting that are evidence-based programming. And so, that is living well with chronic conditions, take charge of your diabetes, stepping on, and walk with ease. And Laura Grissom, our nurse on duty, is here in the audience, and she has went through quite a bit of training this last year to make sure that she is up to speed with this evidence-based program. She also has Kathy Harold, who is in our audience here, that has worked with her to present the Step On program, which is a fall prevention program. And so, really making sure that seniors are aware that any type of fall can cause health conditions to go downhill. And so, we want to be on the side of prevention and making sure our seniors know the signs and things that they can do in their own homes. So, we'll be presenting those programs starting in October as a series of seven-week classes. So, evidence-based program will be something that'll be very strong in what you see in the future at St. Clair. You'll also be glad to hear that we actually are one of the centers in the state that had our staff person, Dee Brown, our social services staff person, become heirs certificate holder. This is Alliance Information and Referral Systems. This is a national program that, information about changes in services and things that come down the pike very quickly for information and advocacy for seniors, she's on top of it. She's the one that can actually kind of get out into the world, kind of meet with those seniors one-on-one, and kind of help them through those programs, and she has that up-to-date access all the times through this system. We also, with the Tennessee Commission on Aging, their job, you know, for the state is to really look at where the funding dollars are going to, and they're there to give us kind of guidance for what senior centers do. They're not there to kind of come down and, you know, tell me exactly, pinpoint on things, but they do set the tone of what they're looking for, and not only what they're looking for, what the state's looking for in seniors. Now, I did share with you the Older American Act's layman guide. A lot of folks, when I say this, or I talk about the Older Americans Act, they kind of glaze over, but in 1965, the Older Americans Act money was set up through the federal government. One of the focal points in that was senior centers. Very special site and funding setup along that way for senior centers. Over the years, many things have changed. Many programs have been added that, in-home services, meal program services, ombudsman's programs, so many different things that have come along the way that have addressed the Older Americans Act according to what seniors have been facing as the years have gone by. In this packet, I'll turn to kind of looking at new participants. So, what we get down to is numbers. So, are the seniors liking or coming to programs that we're presenting? So, I've fixed you a chart for new participants for the last kind of couple of years, from actually 2012 to 2000, to where we currently are in 2016. And I really want you to kind of look at those orange and gray and yellow lines. We've had a steady rise of participants coming into the center. You're looking anywhere from 60 and above participants monthly walking through the doors. This is the senior wave. This is the baby boomer wave that we've all talked about, we've all heard about. They are coming. And when they come, they come with certain things and programs that they want to see and hear. And so, we listen to that, and we also listen to what TCAD and our Greater Nashville District is telling us. We're looking at education, health promotion, recreation, and information assistance. So, that graph below there is looking at charts for the last several years of where we have really focused on. You'll look at those education numbers from your 2013. We were really doing, you know, what would be exceptional for most senior centers across the state, where 794 seniors took educational classes at our facility, but last year, at the end of 2015, we had over 1,054. That is changing how we present programs, changing the type of programs we present. Also, in health promotion, and we all know what a key part to a senior's life this is. You hear it every day, seniors need to keep moving, all the way up. You know, we see TV shows with 96-year-olds and 99-year-olds still exercising. It's so important for them, just to know any small movements, along with their doctor's permission, is excellent for them, to extend their life and keep them home as long as they can. So, you're looking at a change from 658 back in '13, all the way up to 1,251 participants that participated in some type of health promotion activity at our center. Of course, recreation, I'm sure you get a lot of calls about recreation, that maybe we've cut recreation programs, or maybe that we have changed the programs that we're not doing recreation. But truly, the programs that we've been presenting do create a social model for recreation. In fact, our numbers, when you go across the board, if, you know, give or take five to 10 people, we've really not changed in the last three years the amount of recreation that we provide, because it is a key aspect of what we do. And then, the last information assistance. This grows every year, and I will tell you, in fact, tomorrow, we have a Medicare Part D open session at the center on October the 2nd, and we expecting about 150 seniors to come to this. This is where we talk about what's coming up. Medicare enrollment is opening up on October the 15th through December the 7th. We have trained not only two staff people, but we also trained some senior volunteers that will come in and assist seniors in the community to help them with looking at the plans. There's always so much information that seniors are given, and then they don't have the skills, or maybe want to have a little bit of assistance looking at that when they, it's a lot of information to funnel through. So, we have some trained staff that've gone through training this year to be able to help those seniors, not make their choice for them, but to help them understand the information that they're giving. And we talk about trends, and I know Kathy might want to come up and talk a little bit about this, but trends for senior center, we have quite a few, and I've listed some of them. I won't go into all of them, but technology boot camp, we're looking at Pinterest and Facebook and Scott. We've got a program, we've got a center in Nashville that does Walk on a Wild Side, and I know Legal's probably, what does that mean? But this is ice skating, and horseback riding, and sailing, and hiking, and canoeing. These are programs. In fact, the senior center in Nashville took their members to a tattoo parlor. Their seniors wanted to know why it was such the rage, and did it really hurt? So, the senior center director actually took a group out. They went to a tattoo parlor, stayed on one side of the glass where they could see, it was all healthy, but they actually got to see someone in process, and then, I think the rest of the day, they went over to one of the bars or pubs, of course, no alcoholic drinks involved, but they had a nice afternoon on the wild side. So, thinking outside that box is definitely going to be something that senior centers are going to have to do. In fact, Uber and Lyft are very popular in the transportation world. We in fact have a program coming up this coming week to present an Uber class for our seniors, so that they can understand what that entails, so that they can, one, find out optional ways for transportation. We have a great system with Rover, we have a great system with the Mid Cumberland system, but still, we have seniors outside those fringes that don't have reliable transportation. Uber may, Uber and Lyft, and some of the others that will follow, may be a lifesaver for seniors. We're looking at trends that this can help them with grocery shopping, back and forth their doctor's appointments, travel to senior centers, where they don't have to beg somebody to come and take them somewhere. You know, that really does get old for a senior. We also, you know, going into the health aspect, we are introducing a one program that I'm very proud of. It's called the Senior Learning Network. This is a video technology program that we actually have technology that we are, we could, we can link up with NASA and present a program to our seniors. And I can see the men coming into this program in droves, because this would be something about technology, the heyday of the space war. We can actually work with the museum there and present a class. They can ask questions via technology. We can work with folks in Alaska. We can, we've, we worked with Australia this year, trying to do an Australia program that we presented. So, lots and lots of ideas, ideas that technology will bring us. And you don't present programs like this if your staff's not trained. And so, this last year, I've really made an emphasis, not only with myself, but asking the commission, and asking also the city to put funding into it, to really train the staff that we have. We have an excellent staff. They do an outstanding job. They put in lots of hours, and one, they care for seniors. And so, making sure that they have the best tools in their toolbox and training is what we are, and what I try to strive for. I won't go through all of these, but I did list some of the major trainings that a lot of our seniors did this last year, senior staff did. It's very important to them, it's very important to you, that we stay on top of the latest and greatest things in aging. I left a little notes in there about some dates for you to remember. Now, this will be very important for council. Don't forget, May is Older American Month, and you don't want to forget Senior Citizen Day, and you definitely don't want to get National Senior Center Month. So, y'all go ahead and mark those in your calendar. You'll get rave reviews, let me just tell you, if you work on those. And I'll tell you the last couple of things. I pulled a couple senior articles from newspaper headlines, and one that I saw was Revamp Retirees. And so, "No Longer a Subject of Matter of Riddle and Fear and Anxiety. Aging Is Being Embraced With a Light-Hearted Approach in the Media. In Showcasing a Growing Consumer Acceptance Incorporated Reference to Modern Fashion and Pop Culture, This Shift Helps to Put More Contemporary Spotlight on What Can Be Thought of as an Outreach to the Generation." This suggests a shift toward a more positive view of aging, a positive view of aging. How many of you in your mind do not have a positive view of aging? We at the senior center do. Old age is not for wince. It's tough, and you need seniors that can make it through it and would put a smile on their face every day. And again, partnerships, you know, I was talking about Uber a minute ago. Uber is looking for 100,000 drivers. They're thinking about their senior retirees. They have time on their hands, they're looking for a little extra money, well-trained, they know the city, to put them to work. Just excellent ideas. And I left you with quite a few of just numbers for the city of Murfreesboro, and that last page is just some fun folks that we have at the center that come every day. Kathy, do you want, I know I've gone on, y'all haven't gotten time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you can.
I think this would be under the health promotion, but I see this under evidence-based programs. Do you, does the Senior Citizen Center, does it participate in the Silver Sneakers program?
We currently don't. We have met with Lanny Goodwin and some of the staffs at Parks and Rec and Legal over the application with Healthways and Silver Sneakers. It would be an asset to our center, and not only to Parks and Rec, to have Silver Sneakers in our community. It's one of the leading, I don't know if it's listed as evidence-based. It is in here. I think they've made some changes in it in the last couple of years. It's one of the leading promotions for physical fitness, and I happen to be an instructor, a trained instructor, in Silver Sneakers, and it would be wonderful for my center to get that, so that I could actually get back in and exercise sometime, instead of maybe sometime pushing paperwork. That would be great.
Awesome.
Any other?
Can I ask you, if you're on the staff of the Senior Citizen Center, would you mind standing up, please? And then also, if you're on the board, if you wouldn't mind standing up. You know, a lot of, thank you very much for your hard work, and, you know, in our form of government, a lot of our boards and commissions are all volunteers, and we get recommendations back from our, from our boards and commissions, and that's where we make a lot of our decisions. And I want to say thank you for, for what you do and how you, you do it with our, with our staff and make us look good. And our council representatives, we have Mr. Young and Ms. Washington.
And let me say, it's really a team approach, because you've got an excellent staff that provides the services, and then you have an excellent board that helps in many, many ways lead and guide. So, it's a much overlooked, but very important aspect of our city government, and as, we're going to have a whole lot more seniors coming along, and they're going to need programs, and they're going to need opportunities, and I think we're leading the way in that.
Absolutely. And, Ms. Rigsby, we've talked about it before. My office is right across the street from your, from the center, and so, I get to monitor, you know, see all the people coming in and out of there, and so, routinely, when I drive through, I see all the people walking through. As a matter of fact, I was in the office early this morning, around 7:00 in the morning, of your employees or staff members, they were walking into the, to the center. So, we appreciate what you do and know how, how hard you work and the service that you provide. So, I want to thank you for what you're all doing. Thank you, Ms. Rigsby.
We do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for letting us have the opportunity to present.
Fantastic. Any more questions? All right. We'll move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading. And also, if you're with the center and you don't want to stay for the rest of our boring meeting, I'm going to go ahead and give you guys the opportunity to get up and go and see your families, so. Thank you.
I tell you, they've got a big department with this taxes for, for seniors, Jim Getzman and the couple, they spend lots of hours doing that.
We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15046 to rezone an area located along North Thompson Lane and Medical Center Parkway to mixed-use MU district.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15048 amending Chapter 2, Administration, Section 217, Budget, authorizing the city manager to amend a budget by transferring funds without city council approval, provided that the total expenditures of a fund are not increased.
Move for passage, second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15053 amending Appendix C, Employees' Revised Pension Trust Agreement of the Murfreesboro City Code to comply with state law relative to qualified domestic relation orders.
Move for passage, second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. In your packet, you have a letter from the city recorder, finance director regarding fiscal year 2016 budget amendment. Ms. Wright.
Tonight, we did lay on your desk, in addition to this letter, we have an amended, substituted Exhibit A to go with the ordinance that we're going to ask you to consider after this, but I'd like to tell you a little bit about it first. Earlier, we passed on second reading the ability for the city manager to make budget amendments that will come back to you that do not increase any expenditures to fund balance. What this ordinance says is to, except for the community development, is to increase expenditures, but they have offsetting revenues, or they're going to be using cash from our fund balance. And I'm going to go through those, so that you can see what you have tonight. The first thing we have is community development. Now that we know their carryover and their new grant amounts, we're reallocating those funds based on what the estimate was and what the true amount ended up being for our carryovers. So, that is a plus and minus to revenues and expense. We're just moving things around mostly. The Bloomfield Links, they've gotten a grant and some designated donations, which will increase expenditures, so there won't be an effect on fund balance. We have a plus and minus of $24,000 to their revenues and expenditures. The city court and police department have a grant that is through the governor's highway safety program, and we need to budget those revenues and the expenditures, and we have done that. They will be offsetting, so they will not affect fund balance. Additionally, we've got, this is strictly a movement from one department to another. This is something the city manager could have done, but since we had this coming tonight, we thought we'd go ahead and add it in. It's a, it's a fund that we collect through city court and pay the state, for whatever reason, that's always been in the police department. And I've reached out to Chief Crispin and to Judge Sellers, and no one really seems to recall why that was ever there, and with the way our new software system works, the city court cannot spend the police department's funds. So, we figured now is a good time to move that money over. Additionally, we have a change that we're making to the recreation department. This was a, an effect that came from the MAGS study. There were some salaries that came in later after the budget was approved, that, that we need to fix in the budget, so that they don't end up going over budget later. So, we thought now is a good time to go ahead and do that, since the salaries are already in effect. We're moving some items that we brought back to you a couple of times in, in the end of fiscal year 15, trying to use some of our surplus in 15. The items themselves didn't all make it here by June 30, so now they're being paid for in July when they actually arrived, and so, that is requiring a budget amendment. These will use fund balance. They would have been budgeted in fiscal year 16, had we realized in advance that we couldn't get them here in time, so these will actually use fund balance. And these items total $164,000. One other thing is our drug fund. We found out today that when they came to you at our last meeting, asking to spend unbudgeted funds, they hadn't contacted our department, saying they're going to need a budget amendment. And so, now they're ready to spend those funds, but we need to get, get the process done for the three readings, so that we can actually put that in their budget where they can spend the money. If you look at your table tonight, this is an exhibit showing how all of these things will affect the various line items. That's important for community development, to be able to show not only HUD, but our auditors, that you did approve for these monies to be shifted into these programs. This is not anything that, I don't believe that you haven't already been aware of. One item is the public facilities grant. That was, that was a, something that did get shifted at the last minute because of Bradley Academy and ADI requirements. We flipped those, what was going to be paid for from community development, what was going to be paid for with bond money. So, Mr. Crumley, I believe, brought that recently. I'll be glad to answer any questions about this. This is a summary that we'll use going forward, and this is our second budget amendment to fiscal year 16. And as I said, when we made our first one, these will become more common, because we need to do it in the system, number one, and then, number two, especially as we get closer to the end of the year, we don't, we can't do the catch-up anymore. We've got to do this as we go along. That's something the state requires, and... That's something the state requires, and we have a better system now to be able to keep up with this and manage it within our software, which I think will make it easier for us, too.
Okay. Any questions? All right. We'll consider on passage on first reading ordinance 15045, amending the 2015, 2016 budget, and this will be the second amendment.
Move for approval, second reading.
I have a motion, second. And a second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll continue in new business. We have a letter from the City Attorney regarding ordinance 15060, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Section 32, 1106.
Mayor, Council, before you, is a recommendation to address some conduct that has been occurring that we believe is a hazard to vehicles and their occupants, terms of persons intruding devices or sticks out into the roadway. And when this was called to my attention, it appeared we didn't have something that clearly prohibited that conduct. And the purpose of this ordinance amendment and restatement is to make that a violation of the City Code. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Hearing none, I move for approval, second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into new business. Conduct a public hearing and consider a certificate of compliance for Magdalen F. Pierce at Topshelf, 2122 D. Thompson Lane.
Mayor, this is for a new owner of this location that already exists, and you do have to have a public hearing in order for this person to be able to move on to the state level. They have met our, our local requirements.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. We'll remind you the rules of the public hearing. If you have anything to say, please go to the podium, address your comments to the council. You'll have three minutes, and also please name, or please let us know where you live. We'll now open the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider for passage the certificate of compliance.
Move for passage.
Second. I have a motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item nine, we'll consider recommendations of the Principal Planner for mandatory referral 2015-717 to consider transferring 2.4 acres of real estate to MTSU for property known as Black Cat Cave located along Memorial Boulevard. The City Parks and Recreation Department is the applicant. Ms. Jackson.
Hi, good evening.
You don't look like a Principal Planner.
I am completely unqualified for that position, yes. I would like to tell you, though, about Black Cat Cave, and I know some members of this council have already received this message. I'm happy to bring, to bring that to the rest of you as we go through this process. Black Cat Cave is located at 3500 Old Lebanon Pike. In the early 1900s, the cave was used as a restaurant and as a nightclub. It was also said to have been used as a speakeasy during prohibition. The site was federally owned in the 1960s, but in 1971, after Lebanon Pike was rerouted, this parcel was severed from the VA grounds. And so the United States Department of the Interior quitclaim to the 2.4-acre parcel that includes the entrance to Black Cat Cave to the city of Murfreesboro. The, the deed was generally conditioned for the perpetual use of the premises as and for public park and public recreation purposes at that time. Our records indicate that it was closed. The cave itself was closed at that time, and effort was made by the city to gate and prevent entry into that cave. And for years, we used that property and the green space around it as a roadside park with picnicking amenities. We recently learned that looters had entered the cave. They'd broken up a portion of the concrete floor and dug into the earth below the concrete. At this time, we formed some very key partnerships. Through our collaborative efforts with MTSU and their Department of Sociology and Anthropology, Dr. Shannon Hodge and Tanya Paris have been very important in helping us understand what is there and in working towards the next step. The Tennessee Division of Archaeology and Aaron Dieter Wolf has been also key, as well as the Native History Association and Pat Cummings in advising us on, on the site and, and helping us with the next step. What we've learned about the site is that it contains artifacts and human remains from the prehistoric archaic period that are dated to be 5,000 to 7,500 years old. Dr. Hodge unfortunately is unable to be here tonight. I do have some photos that she had prepared, and will do my best to share that information with you in a less academic way, I'm sure, than Dr. Hodge would be able to answer. But let me share with you a little bit about Black Cat Cave and Murfreesboro's legend with a hidden past. And this is her presentation that I know some of you have seen already. First, when you look at the site, this shows the area, Old Lebanon Pike, kind of on the north side of town, across from the VA property. You can see that treed area. The cave itself is almost a sinkhole entrance, hard to see from the road, but you can see that cave entrance on-site. This is the photo from the early 30s. At that time, it was being used as a dance club, I believe, known as Rainbow Cave during part of that time. And here you can see some of the partners from MTSU and also from the Tennessee Division of Archaeology in helping to learn what is, what is going on there. From inside the cave, you can see that mound of dirt. That is actually the looter's spoils. It's kind of a little bit hard to tell from the photo, but described as the size of a Buick, I've heard multiple times, in, in the, the area that was actually dug up and damaged and looted through. Here you can see some striations as they've studied through the depths of some of that pit that was dug there. And brought a group of students out. Really, really interesting for me to be a part of this project and learn more, something that obviously is not my normal workday in Parks and Recreation, but really a fun thing to be a part of, as, as the students came and went through the spoils. They didn't dig in the, into any of the undisturbed areas, but the areas that were disturbed sifted through that and brought a lot of different artifacts and things back to the lab to study more, to date, to clean and to learn from those things. Here's another shot of after everything was sifted through, the remaining dirt was placed back into the hole and then part of that concrete floor from when the cave floor was broken. You can see those pieces just placed back and close to that original condition. This, you can see, I'm working on the outside, you can see remains of the old gate in this shot. Even when we were working to put in our new structure and our new gate in that area, they helped to study the places that the footers would go and dug those holes, you know, very carefully to, to make that happen. And here you can see the, the new gate partially constructed. The door's not in yet in this, in this photo, but we worked through Griggs and Maloney to, who designed the, the gate and did the, the pieces of that. It's biologically transparent. You can see the, the way that the different gate pieces come together help wildlife, bats in particular, it's a bat-friendly design, be able to come and go from that gate. And it's also, of course, much more sturdy than, than the previous gate. So when you look at all the different partnerships, I think that has been a really key part as we have learned more and, and having worked together to rebuild the cave fence, the gate, and to better protect that site. It's a very important site. What we know now, just its history, the cultural site area, you know, we've always known that the consensus among historians is that Rutherford County was not a residential area, it was an open hunting ground, and, but it was not home to a group of Native Americans. And what we know from this discovery will be able to, and I say "we" loosely, there are people who will be able to rewrite history as we learn much more about Rutherford County and what happened here long ago. So moving forward and, and what we're doing in researching the property and learning more about the current and the future preservation of the site, there's a lot of different factors that come into play. A lot of different federal and state limitations and requirements for the preservation of the site in reference to its status as a Native American cemetery. And we'll need to be very careful with that moving forward, of course. We believe that MTSU is likely better able to preserve, protect, and continue to study the history contained into this site for that long-term area. When you think about the, the deed itself, that recreational designation, and what we need to do moving forward, that's something that we are, have been working very hard to understand and know what to do next. What we anticipate now is a joint application from the city of Murfreesboro and MTSU to the federal government to allow the transfer of the 2.4-acre parcel to, from the city to MTSU. Before that happens, there are a number of steps that'll have to be completed by the city and by MTSU in their approval process before we can make that request and the transfer could be completed. In the meantime, the park does remain closed to the public. The Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, have unanimously supported this. And what we would like to recommend for your approval tonight is to continue to explore the possibility of transferring the property to MTSU and to complete the transfer subject to final administrative and legal approvals. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson?
Is there any language in the transfer that would require it to be recre, oh, some kind of use of the property, or is it just a blank transfer of the property to MTSU without any restrictions as to what it would be potentially useful?
The deed, when the city received the property, does have those conditions in regards to recreational use. What we would do in making that application back, as we learn more, and Mr. Ives has spent a lot of time researching that and continues to, along with staff at MTSU, it would potentially be that joint application. And that's, moving forward, some of the things that they would be working out as far as how that application would be made to the federal government.
Very good presentation.
Thank you. I wish Dr. Hodge could be here and have, have shared that information. But it has been a, a very interesting project, to say the least. I think it's very important to Rutherford County, and I appreciate the support of the leadership as we move forward in learning more, and especially the partnerships. I think it's been very invaluable to have MTSU and their expertise to help guide us through this thus far.
What's really interesting about this is this has the potential of rewriting history.
It does.
Because as you had mentioned earlier, we always assumed this was hunting grounds for the Native Americans, and now we have proof that they resided here.
Yes, sir.
In this cave. So it's kind of interesting, anytime you can rewrite history.
Yes, sir.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
With that, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll now consider recommendations of the Planning Commission and schedule a public hearing to consider proposed Amendment 2015-803 to the sign ordinance regarding temporary signs and signs that are exempt from permitting fees to City of Murfreesboro Legal and Building and Co.'s Department applicants. Ms. Kerr.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of planning, members of council. During its regular meeting on April 1st, 2015, the Planning Commission scheduled, conducted a public hearing to consider amendments to the sign ordinance. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to defer action. On April 28th, the Planning Commission convened to take a tour of the city and view temporary signage. This tour was advertised as a special meeting and was open to the public. At the May 20th regular Planning Commission meeting, this ordinance amendment was discussed under Old Business. During the meeting, the Planning Commission requested a special work session where it could devote more time to discuss the issues. On June 23rd, the Planning Commission held a special meeting to discuss this item once again. After further discussion at the special meeting, the Planning Commission voted to schedule another public hearing on the matter. In the interim, the Planning Department and the Building and Co.'s Departments held a second stakeholders' meeting on July 28th and discussed the proposed changes with interested parties. A second public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on August 5th, at which time the action was deferred once again. At the September 16th Planning Commission meeting, the proposed amendment was discussed under New Business, and Planning Commission voted to recommend that City Council schedule the matter for a public hearing.
Ms. McGinnan, what date would you like?
I would like November 5th.
And seeing you're not going to be here on November 5th, I'm sure you would like that date.
I offered some dates for a would-be present for the City Manager, and I agreed that November 5th would be best.
All righty then.
You've got it good, which is rare.
All right. November 5th is the date that the retiring city attorney is recommending.
Don't we already have some, a public hearing that night?
On November 5th?
Georgia, do we already have a public hearing that night?
Or is it, is it the 12th?
We do, she said.
Okay. All right.
Yes, that's the, probably next to the reserve that we'll be having a public hearing.
Yep.
You ready? Somebody might come up.
Both of those? Valley Grove. Both of those in the same night?
We probably need to separate those.
Okay. How about the 19th? Ms. McGinnan, you're just going to give us your retirement smile, aren't you, and say, sure, that's whatever it's for?
I always defer to the council's wishes.
How about November the 19th? Is that okay? Or will we meet that week for?
I'm looking.
November 19th.
Veterans Day is the 11th.
You won't meet on the 11th.
Hang on a second, let me look. Yeah. Veterans Day is Wednesday, the 11th, so we probably would meet the 19th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but, yeah. 19th.
We usually don't.
19th would be better.
Okay, make the motion.
What day is?
Are we good with it?
Good.
I'll move for the 19th, second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the City Attorney with three changes to our employee handbook.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Section 1041 deals with employee timekeeping and is presented to you to deal with the changes that will result from our November 1st expected go-live date for the new software. It is, reflects the responsibilities for the employees and the immediate supervisors, which will now be somewhat different, and goes into more detail about how to clock in or punch in and clock out. So it, it contains details that you haven't previously had. It doesn't substantively change the city policy that accurate timekeeping is expected. So there's a lot more detail, but it's mostly driven by the software and best practices and as a result of a lot of discussion with the HR Department and the Legal Department. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about any specifics in the policy.
Okay.
And I think you will want to adopt these separately. You can certainly do so after all of the discussion, but I think you'd want separate motions.
Any questions? Can we have a motion, please?
Move for approval on item eight.
Yes, it'd be on?
Yes.
Item eight, section 11041, employee timekeeping.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to section 2001, Equal Employment Opportunity Policy.
Thank you. This policy has been revised to provide more detail, to deal with some changes in the law, but basically repeats what has been existing city policy, which is the city expects to comply itself and for all of its employees to comply with federal and state laws providing for equal employment opportunity. The policy describes what are those protected classes, identifies the laws which create those protected classes, describes the complaint procedure if an employee or a job applicant feels that they have been discriminated against because of an unlawful reason, and also identifies the state and federal resources that such a person can seek to utilize if complaining to the city is insufficient. You had in your packet the existing policy, which we've had in effect for 20 years, so you can see what we envisioned as being protected has changed in that time, and that's the primary purpose for the update. Be glad to answer any questions about any of its provisions.
Any questions?
There's no questions. I'll move for approval on item 11B.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Lance.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. LaLance. Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. What's that?
What are you doing down there?
At least she didn't call you Mayor Brad. Right, Ms. Wright?
That's right. I'm getting that down.
That's right. All right, we'll move to employee handbook, section 3005, drug and use misuse and testing policy.
This is an update as well. This is a lengthy policy because it is so related to federal regulatory requirements, and we also needed to reflect the state drug-free workplace requirements. The cover letter that Ms. Baker was the primary author of, of course, I've reviewed it, reflects in some detail what those changes were. I'd be happy to answer questions about the things that have not changed that are in the policy, as well as these updates that are summarized in her cover letter. The expectation is that should you approve this, we would then go, you know, forward with the process of seeking state recertification notice to our employees and continuing to do the random testing we do of safety-sensitive employees and the other kinds of testing, reasonable suspicion and post-accident, we do of any employee. We're not, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. McGinnan. One of the questions I was going to ask, you may have just answered it, but there was a question that I had when I read through the random testing subsection. I didn't understand this, what it meant to say, in a separate pool of employees?
We, section 3006 deals with people who have a CDL license. We have a, you know, that revision is going to come to you. It didn't come to you tonight. It's going to be coming. And we also have a separate policy dealing with the Rover drivers, because federal, and people who deal with maintaining those vehicles, Federal Highway Administration. The people who have a CDL license are tested randomly in a different group than people who are safety-sensitive, because the regulations require you test a certain percentage, because the testing groups are different. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about the separate pool. So there is a random selection among safety-sensitive people, there's a random selection from the CDL people, but, you know, they may, many CDL holders are also safety-sensitive, but you need to separate them for this, getting the data about the test.
They just need to be in different sample populations or whatever?
Yes.
So does the, is this new to people? I mean, is this going to be new to some people?
No.
Okay.
No. Well, let me back up. One of the things that we have done as part of this process is to review who we had classified as safety-sensitive. There have been changes in the law limiting or very conservatively interpreting who is safety-sensitive. And so there are some jobs who previously had been tested because they were safety-sensitive that, based on our review, will no longer be classified as safety-sensitive and will no longer be tested. And so there is a change that will be simultaneous with that. That list isn't part of the policy. That's something that will, you know, has been worked on by department heads in conjunction with legal and HR, but that change is coming. It's not directly required by this, but we reviewed, as we should have, whether or not we were using the correct classification for people. It also fell nicely with the review of jobs that we've done as part of the MAGG classification system to really look and see, is somebody's job likely to cause loss of life if they're misusing alcohol or drugs? One of the differences had, that we had taken when we first started this program about 20 years ago was an expansive view that if somebody had a car allowance, they were likely driving other employees, and therefore they were classified as safety-sensitive. The case law developments since that time don't really support that, so there are some positions, like that of the city attorney, that have previously been classified as safety-sensitive that will no longer be classified as safety-sensitive. But we believe we have class, are going to be classifying as safety-sensitive everybody who we think we could legitimately defend that classification for.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Question. Are our fire and rescue drivers classified?
Oh, yes.
Have a CDL?
They're not required to have a CDL because they're a, there's a government sort of exception, but they are safety-sensitive.
Okay, any more questions?
No more questions. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to board and commission appointments, and you have one on the newly-named Murfreesboro Art Committee. Ms. DeeDee Potter.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to beer permits.
Mayor, we have two tonight. They're both special event permits from the Chamber of Commerce. One is for an October 8th event at L&amp;L Contractors, and the other is for October 27th at their own headquarters.
They're both in good order?
Yes, sir, they are.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one payment to be, or one bill to be paid tonight.
I would move we pay the bill.
Second.
I have a motion is second to pay the bill. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I have a few items under other business. Ms. McGinnan, you raise your hand first.
I did, thank you. You have on your desk from the Water and Sewer Board a recommendation to authorize the acquisition of a small piece of property, as the cover letter reflects. Because it's a small, we hadn't yet, we weren't appraising it, we're proposing to make an offer and go forward with condemnation as necessary based on the highest, closest value, which we thought was the Walmart property. The amount is below the level that would need to come to council, but it was the authorization to proceed with condemnation that caused us to bring it to you now because of the timing of the project. And so we would ask your authority if we cannot resolve it in accordance with our usual acquisition policies and procedures to go forward with the condemnation.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I have a couple of items for other business. Does anyone else have anything?
Yes, sir.
We have been working on the MED, MED Middle Tennessee Electric Evaluation Panel and have the recommendations for you based upon what we had talked about on recommending people to serve on that committee for the evaluation. So would like to recommend Richard Stone, who was nominated from the Murfreesboro Electric Department Power Board. He'll be representing MED. Rick LaLance, representing the Murfreesboro City Council. Sandra Trail, who would be representing the citizens at large. Joe Bells, representing large user, Joe's at MTSU. And Brian Hercules, representing economic development, and he's with the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce.
We hired the evaluation company yet?
I'll defer that to Mr. Lawrence.
Have we hired the evaluation company yet?
That'll be the purpose of this group. We've got two proposals, I believe, for this team to review and make a recommendation to the council for the firm to do the analysis of how much is Murfreesboro Electric worth. Again, as we've mentioned before, that's one part of the process, is to put a price tag, if you will, on the system. Additionally, on a parallel path, there would be the deal points, the issues such as promotions, employees, making sure that, you know, we believe operationally it's going to work. It's a whole separate process, but the charge to these five would be to take those proposals, a review on, and make a recommendation for who to hire.
That would be their only charge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a timeframe for that?
I think we would be ready to try to get that group together sometime next week. We think maybe one briefing meeting with interviews the following week.
Okay, that's a good group. Mr. Mayor, I'll move for approval of that.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Okay, you have some information that was placed on your desk before the meeting, and at the last council meeting, we went through, before the meeting, the special, special meeting where we were interviewing city attorney applicants. I am proud to announce that Mr. Craig Tyndall, we did reference checks, all of his information came back stellar. Mr. Godwin had followed through and called and spoke with different people regarding his background check and reference checks, and they all came back. How would you describe it, Mr. Lawrence?
They were outstanding, and we shared those with the council.
Yes. So since that time, have had conversations with Mr. Tyndall and have come up with an offer of employment that wanted to bring to you, that would be basically offering Mr. Tyndall the job at these, in these pages, you'll see sort of the, a lot of it's just standard information, but when he would start, when he would get here, and all of those contingencies. Now, I will say that Mr. Godwin would engage outside counsel on a employment contract, very similar to Mr. Lawrence's employment contract, and it would be contingent upon being licensed in Tennessee and several things like that that would still be in the contract. So I guess what, asking the council if it's your pleasure to proceed with, after tonight, hiring Mr. Tyndall to be the next city attorney for Murfreesboro.
I'll make the motion to hire Mr. Craig Tyndall as the new city attorney.
Second. And a motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Want to, again, tell Mr. Godwin and his staff how good that they've handled this on going through. And I think going through the process, we ended up with a, someone that will never be able to fill Ms. McGinnan's shoes, but we had someone that I think will serve the city well and at the same time, saving quite a bit of money, taxpayer dollars, on going through this process, so. Any other business to come before the council? Ms. Michado, you're looking like there's something that needs to come through. All right. Want to wish all the people who are, all of our county schools and city schools, who will be on fall break next week, to have a good fall break, and the teachers to come back rested and relaxed, and parents too. Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.